be voting on tonight, and then we'll move through a number of items that we need to vote on. After that, we'll have public comment towards the end of the meeting on anything else. So for public comment, we have a number of meeting procedures and expectations. We ask that you come to the podium, which is right up here, that you share your name and the city that you live in, and you'll be provided with three minutes to speak. So we want to ensure that this is a safe place for everyone involved, and we ask you to refrain from clapping or cheering, booing, using profanity, vulgar language, threats, name-calling, or making derogatory comments. These actions are disruptive to the meeting and can inhibit the free speech of other people. If you use profanity or engage in threatening language, the microphone will be shut off for the remainder of your time. If there are disruptive actions or a breach of peace, I will ask the individual or individuals to stop, and if it continues, those individuals will be asked to leave. Public comment is an opportunity for all voices to be heard, despite whether people in attendance or even the elected officials agree or disagree with what is being said. People have a right to speak without being screamed at, or criticized, or disrupted by others who are in attendance. And despite our own opinion, despite our personal beliefs and values, people have a right to come and speak about whatever topic they choose, including their religious beliefs, whatever those beliefs may be. So again, this meeting is a lawful assembly of a governmental body, and disrupting the order of this meeting is committing a breach of peace, which is a misdemeanor under state law. So with that, we will get started tonight. We'll get started with a moment of silence, and then we'll go to a pledge of allegiance, and then roll call. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next, we will have roll call.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Asasi?
Present.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Here.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, next, I'll take this moment to introduce our interpreter tonight. So if you need assistance with interpretation services, please let us know, and we'll provide that. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. We are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment. Buenas noches. Estamos complacidos de proveer servicios de interpretación en español esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieran proveer comentario
Thank you. All right, next, that will take us to public comments, and these are public comments specifically on action items. So earlier today, we had a number of standing committee meetings, and we voted on a number of items. So if there's an action item that we are going to vote on later today, now is an opportunity to come forward. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and in this section, we ask that you're really explicit about what action item or what item that we're voting on that you are speaking about. So you can come on up.
My name is Carrie. I live in Grand Rapids. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the ordinances to be adopted, specifically number three, the salary ordinance for the employees of the Grand Rapids Police. I think it's especially egregious that you would even consider any additional salary changes for Grand Rapids Police right now, especially in light of the fact that one of their former officers is facing second-degree murder charges for the execution of Patrick Leoya, along with the fact that two charges have just been brought against them from the Department of Civil Rights, with 28 other cases that they are investigating, and the fact that the Michigan State Supreme Court just ruled against them that they are in violation of Amendment four of the Constitution. How can you justify giving more money to a department with all of that going on while they are still continuing to harass, intimidate, brutalize activists who speak up against them on a regular basis? Some of us still have bruises from two weeks ago when they brutalized people trying to get on an elevator. It's unnecessary to give them any more money until they can prove that they can stop the actions that they're doing right now and stop violating the law, that they are sworn to uphold. As a military veteran, I take it very seriously when I swore my oath to the Constitution, and I believe that our police officers should do the same. And right now, they are not, by any means, following that, as was just proven with the ruling against them by the Supreme Court. So while every time I come up here and I see these votes for salary raises, for additional vehicles, for all the extra monies you want to give them, it makes me disgusted that I live in this city that purports to be one of the best cities to live in in the country, and yet, we continue to have a police force brutalizing, harassing, intimidating, and murdering civilians. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others who wish to be heard on action items tonight?
My name is Vee Mahaji, Third Ward. In addition to what Carrie had to say on the line-three item, 2014, a black 15-year-old was beaten and bludgeoned by GRPD with a flashlight. 2015, eight black residents are beaten and tased by GRPD inside of their own home. 2016, GRPD breaks out a window and beats a sleeping black man in his parked car. 2017, a study found that GRPD profiles by POG drivers are three times more likely to be pulled over and arrested. 2017, GRPD points a gun and handcuffs an 11-year-old black child. 2018, GRPD brutalizes and handcuffs an 11-year-old twins and a 17-year-old, all black, for walking in the road. 2018, GRPD shot at a black 14-year-old for playing with a BB gun. 2018, GRPD traumatizes and wrongfully detains an 12-year-old girl and 10-year-old boy, both black, by gunpoint. 2019, GRPD calls ICE to attempt to deport a resident despite having his passport. 2019, two Latino teenagers are held at gunpoint for jaywalking. 2019, a court ruled that records from a secret GRPD phone line were subject to public record requests. Instead of releasing those records, city administrators complicit in GRPD's corruption erased them. 2021, after police pulled over a vehicle for littering, a GRPD officer repeatedly punched a black driver in the face and told him, "You're lucky you weren't dead." 2021, the Michigan Supreme Court challenges the GRPD's photographic print program. According to testimony given to the Supreme Court, 75% of officers initiated encounters in this program involved black people. The practice by GRPD was found unconstitutional. 2022, a pregnant woman pleads GRPD to stop pointing their gun at her house and her husband after being stopped for a license plate. April 4th, 2022, Patrick Leoya is profiled by GRPD and executed over a traffic stop. Shortly after that, 2022, GRPD blindly shoots at a victim of a car crash, later stating that they didn't know the difference between the sound of a gunshot and wood snapping. Help me help you and explain to me where your critical comprehension skills are lacking and how you're unable to see what GRPD is doing to certain demographics in our community. What in your head makes you say that these people should get more money? Can we have an open conversation about this later? Because I would really, I would really like to know. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others who wish to be heard on action items tonight?
Mayor, if I could, just to clarify, the ordinance for which the last two speakers referenced, that is not for uniform sworn police officers. Those are for civilian crime scene technicians and latent fingerprint examiners who work the scene of incidents.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. All right, hi, welcome.
Hello. My name is Shannon Tanis, and I'm from the First Ward. I will be speaking on the action item from Fiscal Committee on number five, the resolution authorizing additional auditing professional services with Plant &amp; Moran, P-L-L-C, for an amount not to exceed $15,000 for the year ending June 30, 2022. I've already spoke before you and told you the violation that Plant &amp; Moran is doing the taxes for the United Way of West Michigan, which is the fiduciary entity for a lot of homeless system resources and benefits, and that is a very big conflict of interest by the professional accounting, public accounting standards. So I implore the body to cease and assist all business with Plant &amp; Moran, and also put that $15,000 into an escrow account, and also follow up with the compt controller to initiate an audit through the Audit General of Michigan, to see other, what conflict of interest are in, going on also besides that one. The other action item is Committee of the Whole, number four, resolution approving a Brownfield Plan Amendment for the $14 million dwelling place, original community land trust project located at 2080 Union Avenue Southeast. I'm currently oversighting Dwelling Place. They are not in good standing with their entity, that they're signing contracts with their leasers, not to mention there is management issues with historical buildings and code and other things. So I would say no to that until we get done with the oversight and follow-through with all of the issues with Dwelling Place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard on action items?
Hi, I'm Kai, lifelong resident of Grand Rapids. I will be speaking on ordinance number three regarding the salaries of crime scene techs, latent print examiners, and police intern units. The fact that this wasn't rolled into your police budget is beyond me. Why are you coming now after your police budget was already approved to now ask for more money? So that makes the supposed budget cut void, right? Because now you're just approving more money to come from us, despite having told us that you would lower that budget in some way to allocate it elsewhere. So basically, you guys are doing what you always do by doing one thing and then doing another, right? And you want it to stop and say, "Hey, well, this ain't officers that are in uniform," you know, "those tactical teams walking around the southeast side harassing folks." Instead, it's the crime scene investigators, the ones that come and help police cover up crimes they commit, or the ones that don't actually do their jobs, like when you get your house broken into and they act like it's the biggest deal ever to grab some prints off your door or your car. I remember one time, it was Mother's Day, actually, and I lived on the west side, and somebody decided to give everybody the gifts, the gift of three flat tires on their car for Mother's Day. We called them out to get prints. I mean, it was a serial situation, happened all around the west side, and they couldn't be bothered. They could not be bothered. So where do they deserve a raise? In a raise, why a raise when you use about six to eight officers for one traffic stop? Couldn't the raise come from only allowing two officers, and if it's an emergent situation, then call those additional officers for assistance? Why do you need six to eight? It sounds like you guys don't need any more money. You don't need more money to give to these people. They have everything they need. If I'm getting pulled over because my headlight is out and I have six officers behind me for their protection, that tells me they have all they need. When they are allowed to go around and steal people's personal items for the hell of it, they have all they need. Okay? When they can go and walk around the southeast side to make everyone feel safe, they have all they need. When they have a special team to harass just protesters, they have all they need. When they have time to go and arrest people and give them warrants after two weeks' time and give people felonies, they have all they need.
Thank you.
Understand that.
Thanks for your comments. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on action items?
Hello, good evening. My name is Cindy Hicks, and I've lived in Grand Rapids now, going on three decades. It's a long time to not get included anymore on any of these committees. I don't get any notices anymore. I just want y'all to know that. And I own a pretty good amount of property, but I don't get any input on any projects anymore, even ones that go behind my yard. And I would like to talk about the, the action item for Experience Grand Rapids to receive I'm just wondering why $150,000 would go towards tourism when I have people sleeping on mattresses in my backyard? It seems like a reasonable request, and I was working on a housing development till the ICCF just sold the part in the middle of my project to an unknown investor that I can't seem to find on the computer. But, you know, that's how you get treated when you don't get invited to these special select committees, you know, especially when you used to sit on the boards. Anyways, I just thought I would, again, talk about, you know, the need I see on here for, like, lead pipes and servicing requests. And I just want to point and highlight the fact that the sewer lines have not been changed out when you did, like, five and 10 years ago, just the water lines. So now we have sewer lines collapsing and poor residents that can't afford to replace their sewer lines. So they're probably going to end up homeless, and we don't really have funds that would help people with that type of emergency. And I'm very concerned, especially about our elderly population. They, they deserve to get their service pipes done. If they're going to get their water replaced, sewer just seems like in order. I can only speak about, three years ago, my sewer lines backed up into my house six times. So can you imagine in the dead of winter, you're a single mom, no child support, because, you know, the cops took care of your kid's dad? So your, your shit just backs up six times. Okay? Like, it was enough to send me to the hospital, because the stress was just beyond what I could tolerate. And, you know, all I could think about was, why doesn't the city care? You have money for infrastructure, but it's not going to any of the places it needs to go. You know, when I see things like the sidewalk, like, the, my neighbor's house burned down, but the cement slab was, like, removed just so they purposely couldn't drive onto a vacant piece of land. So I see all kinds of waste going on, and I'm, I'm really disgusted about it, and I wish I got more than three minutes to talk about three different items.
Thanks. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on action items tonight?
Hello, my name is Donnie, and I live in the Third Ward. I would like to speak on the three action items, but unfortunately, I'm probably only going to have time to talk about one. The salary ordinance for employees, trying to get more, trying to get more money to policing through different wording and terminologies, we're not going to have that. Like, you know, the Third Ward is the most, most policed and patrolled, policed and patrolled area of Grand Rapids. I think we know that. Karu Par, I think you know that as well. The crime scene technicians, to give more money to these technicians, crime, when they show up to crime, it's afterwards, right? Like, it's already afterwards. Somebody's either dead, you know, their house got broken into, their car's gone, whatever you want to call it, they show up afterwards. So they're not preventing crime. I think we should put more money into the prevention of crime and not into GRPD, because they don't prevent any type of crime. So, another, another section of the water system supply, I don't understand why we keep, why we keep giving ourselves budgets on things that's going to help all of us, because we already know, like, instead of you guys sending out notices to areas where the lead is, how about you don't give yourself a $32 million limit and just fix the lead pipes? How about that? We keep, we keep making it like this minimal option, or this, this, this limit of how much we can provide for, for different situations, but yet, there is countless limits of how much you put in your pockets each fiscal year. The city's budget, the fiscal budget, every single time it comes around, leaves out the Third Ward. And we keep talking about, we keep talking about how we're going to improve the Third Ward, how we're going to get people more, more connected with our community, right? Build unity within the community. Well, how about you actually listen to the community that shows up to these commission meetings every single time and asking for the things, instead of demanding? Because, you know, in, people in other places, when they demand, we know what that looks like, right? So it's like, can you, if you would just hear us out, if you would just jot them down and actually care about them the second that you leave this building, maybe we could get somewhere. Maybe we could get a little further. I did have something else to say. I'm just baffled by the fact that we want to continue to put more money into GRPD, which our crime rate has been the only thing that's kept up with the rate of inflation since 1990. Why are we paying more individuals to continue to do work that isn't working? Why are we paying more individuals to sit there and try and do things like ShotSpotter, which is going to happen after the fact? Why are we putting more money into, my time's about to be up, defund GRPD, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others who wish to be heard on action items?
How you doing? My name is DeAndre Jones. I wanted to speak about the funding that you guys are giving to the lead improvements. Are those going to houses or buildings? Because we have more lead paint on the south side of Grand Rapids than the Flint Water Crisis. You guys have a, there's a free lead certification class that the city is a part of, and there's an organization in Chicago, it's like a grant that you guys got to be able to provide the free eight-hour class. So anybody that's worried about the development of young African-American youth and just people in general, regardless of their ethnicity, growing up in these homes that have a lot of lead paint, it'd be good to get certified and take that free class that's offered to the community to be able to educate landlords and be able to, because it's like $37,000. After, after people don't get rid of that lead paint, so it'd be good to get some education going. Also, I see that you guys are revitalizing the Boys and Girls Club, the gymnasium, that's pretty cool. Just hopefully it's sustainable, it's actually renewable energy improvements to that court, maybe some solar panels that help them reduce the cost of that building, because it's a lot of money to power these buildings that we have in our city. And that'd be all. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, others who wish to be heard on action items?
Hi, I'm Libby Brat. Welcome. Second Ward. I actually have just a few concerns about the Brownfield Plan for 43 Lakeside Drive. Obviously, I would like anything that is, you know, needing to be cleaned up, cleaned up in our city. But I could be wrong about this, too, but I think that that property has always belonged to the Catholic Church or the Grand Rapids Catholic Diocese. I think it still does. And I'm not sure why we're paying for what they built. I mean, like, my house, I didn't build it, but I'm responsible for paying for all the repairs and upkeeps of it. You guys don't give me money to fix, my pipe right now is busted up at the, at the street, so I have to come up with a couple thousand dollars to do that. So I'm not sure why we are paying one of the world's richest organizations to clean up the property that they built, the Catholic Church. I'm also was disappointed to see what the rent prices were going to be for that property, because that was going to be, my understanding was it was going to be for low-income senior citizens. It doesn't seem to be that way anymore. And that changed what was going to happen to the vacant Holland Home property on Fulton Street, you know, further down, I think it's 1400 or 1450 Fulton. And so now Hope Network has purchased it, and they're just kind of sitting on it. And that was, that was originally, there was the thought that that could be low-income senior housing, and they turned away from that because the Marywood property was going to be low-income senior housing. And, you know, I don't know how these decisions get made. I have no clue. I mean, I live in the area, and it's concerning that everything is affordable housing, and I think we all know affordable housing isn't affordable. I mean, I wish we had different language for this. So I just kind of wanted you guys to think about that. I don't think that we should be footing the bill for the Catholic Church to clean up their own property that they originally built. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others who wish to be heard on action items?
My name is Kieran, Second Ward. I wanted to speak on the Fiscal Committee, item six, the resolution authorizing a contract with Experience Grand Rapids in the amount of $150,000. I find this a problematic spending of our city money. Experience Grand Rapids would not exist if the city did not exist, and we need to stop putting money into tourism in this city. I think we need to put our money towards the people who actually live here. A big problem I see is, we can advertise how great we are all the time, but I work in the brewing industry, and we can't find anybody to work. We keep closing the kitchen down earlier and earlier, and closing one day a week, and it's really disappointing to people who come from out of town to try our beer that they might have had at a festival, when we aren't open the hours that we were open last week. You can't come in and get a tour on a Saturday anymore, all of the things that really made Beer City a great Beer City. So a lot of people that are struggling with working in this industry is the fact that they don't make enough of money to pay their rent. Rent is way too high. Affordable housing is such an issue in this city, and we need more of it so that we can have people who are brewing beer, which, trust me, it's a really underpaid job considering we hang our hat on Beer City. It's, it's not great money. The people that do it really love it, and you're lucky to have them, but we should treat them better and get some affordable housing, better healthcare, especially mental healthcare. The abuse that people go through as servers is atrocious. I mean, granted, that's also on our citizens, treating people terribly, but that's also the tourists that we are catering to, that we allow to come in and treat our citizens like trash. And it's really sad, because those people get burnt out and they leave the industry, and then it leads again to not being open, and it's just cyclical. So rather than spending money on, on saying how great we are, I think that we should take that $150,000 and put it into our community so that we can be great, and we can just, like, stop telling people that we're great and trying to convince ourselves that we're great, because there's so many problems. So I think that we should do something different with that $150,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, we're going to close that public comment period, and we'll move to approval of our minutes, and these are minutes from our last commission meeting. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
To move.
Support. All right, moved and supported commissioners. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next, that will take us to petitions and communications.
First one is a communication.
That's all right, got it?
First one's a communication from Emily Bridson regarding their resignation from the City-County Building Authority.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Cody Green regarding a petition to enforce ordinance number 2019-43 against the Broadway Avenue.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Alan Warner regarding the Patrick Leoya case in the Grand Rapids Police Department.
That's received and filed.
And communication from Jane Reynolds regarding their resignation from the Border Review.
All right, and that will be referred to our Committee on Appointments. Okay, that will take us to reports of city officers.
First one is a comptroller's report for the period of June 29, 2022 through July 12, 2022, in the amount of $16,354,854.10.
All right, that's received and filed.
And the treasurer's report for the period of June 29, 2022 through July 12, 2022.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next, that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, our items that we talked on, talked about earlier today in one of our commission meetings, where there was a unanimous vote. So tonight, with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
To move. Support.
All right, moved and supported commissioners. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, that will take us to our ordinances to be adopted, and we have a number of ordinances before us tonight.
The first one is an ordinance amending Chapter 32 of the City of Grand Rapids Code of Ordinances, Title II, Utilities and Services, entitled City Stormwater Drainage System.
All right, can I get a motion?
To move. Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Lanier, you want to tell us about this?
Absolutely, Mayor. We have before us the ordinance amend, ordinance amendment for Chapter 32 of the City Code, and as a result of the updates, there are revisions to 12 different items, and the commission has, this was introduced on July 12. We had before us on the 12th that we would adopt that today on the 26th, and the effective date then would be August 25th.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that will take us to our second ordinance tonight.
It's ordinance amending section four point one of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fifty-six new classification surplus asset coordinator.
Alright can I get a motion?
Some of.
Support.
Alright moved and supported Commissioner Esasi who serves on our civil service commission you wanna tell us about this?
Yes thank you Mayor this is a job description that was previously created in our twenty-seventeen compensation study and so this this job description the surplus asset coordinator was revisited when the previous buyer position became vacant and this was deemed to be a better fit as it aligned to duties regarding the classification there's no change in the range and it was also approved at our civil service board meeting on June first.
Great thank you commissioners any questions or comments alright this is also a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Assasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes it carries alright that will take us to our third ordinance tonight.
That is a salary ordinance for employees represented by the Grand Rapids Police Officers Association crime scene technician slash latent print examiner slash police intern unit.
Alright can I get a motion?
Some of.
Support.
Alright moved and supported Commissioner Moody you wanna tell us about this?
Yes ma'am madam mayor this ordinance would implement the provisions of the labor agreement reached between the city of Grand Rapids and the Grand Rapids Police Officers Association this is a wage increase over the next three years which will affect crime scene technicians latent print examiners and police intern unit.
Great thank you Commissioner city manager anything else you'd like to add on this item?
Nothing else Mayor other than this does not represent a significant part of the Grand Rapids Police Department I don't I don't have the exact number but I surmise that there's probably less than forty employees represented in this group.
Okay thank you alright commissioners any additional questions or comments alright this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Assasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes alright that will take us to our fourth ordinance before us tonight.
It's a series ordinance for water supply system improvement junior lien revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed thirty million dollars.
Oh is it thirty or thirty-two million I have thirty-two.
I said thirty-two.
Oh I'm sorry I thought you said thirty thirty-two million.
Excuse me it is thirty-two million.
Thank you alright can I get a motion?
Some of.
Thank you just wanna make sure we have it correct Commissioner Jones you wanna tell us about this?
Yes Mayor back on February twenty-second of this year we approved the public publication of a forty-five day notice of intent regarding the potential issuance of one or more series of water supply system improvement genuine bonds in an amount not to exceed sixty million the notice of intent was published in the GR Press on Sunday the twenty-seventh of twenty-two the forty-five day referendum period expired in April thirteen of this year without public comment one or more bond series are proposed to provide up to thirty-two million in bond proceeds to pay all or a portion of the cost of constructing system improvements and related components and public infrastructure directly affected by these improvements.
Thank you commissioners any questions or comments alright this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Assasi.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes it carries alright that will take us to our last ordinance tonight.
Ordinance amending section one of the budget ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen for fiscal year twenty twenty-three amendment number one.
Some of.
Support.
Alright moved and supported Commissioner O'Connor our chair of our fiscal committee you wanna tell us about this?
Yes thank you Mayor first four items are all related to our community's children department recognizing grant awards that they have to support programs like the STEAM professional learning community the early expanded learning opportunities network and the T two C studio along with Grow One Thousand and the fifth item is our comptroller department asking for fifteen thousand additional dollars to support auditing services.
Great thanks commissioners any questions or comments alright this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Assasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes it carries and commissioners can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Moved.
Support.
Alright moved and supported all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed it carries alright commissioners next that will take us to resolutions we have one that is a walk-on item tonight so I'll need a motion to suspend the rules can I get that?
Some of.
Support.
Alright moved and supported to suspend the rules all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed it carries rules are suspended commissioners this is a resolution for do I read this city clerk or do you?
You go ahead.
Okay so this is a Williams versus Clark and Williams versus GRPD resolution approving a settlement can I get a motion?
Some of.
Support.
Alright moved and supported city attorney anything else to add?
This was brought to the commission's attention earlier it was pending litigation the recommendation comes from a settlement conference that was held earlier this month with all parties and it would resolve all claims related to this incident.
Okay thank you alright commissioners any questions or comments alright all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed it carries alright next that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight so again public comment you can come forward share your name the city that you live in and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. Hi welcome.
Hi I just wanted to quickly talk about like how I feel the local city government here is affecting my stress level so two weeks ago I had to watch the videos that I saw of you know the other people I come and support I love to be supportive to community members that care about you know how we have to live and I didn't have any bruises left on me from the police because I wasn't here but my arm is really really messed up because you know the stress got so bad Anita Hitchcock isn't here but you know when I get a letter in the mail that states I have criminal charges and a warrant for my arrest and it's about my twenty-ten tax return every person in this audience should care that I'm getting audited for twenty-ten tax returns okay eleven and twelve I should not have criminal charges against me for some BS like this it's a bunch of crap all because I say I don't want police in my neighborhood because they're harassing me and they're harassing my neighbors and they're harassing my friends and they're beating people up and now they're shooting bullets less than a block away from my house that could hit my kid it could hit me and they don't even know that someone really has a gun they just start shooting their guns like the stress has gotten so bad that I that I collapsed in the ER okay half of my body went paralyzed I'm lucky to be alive all because of the stress of my city government I don't have the federal government harassing me or even the state of Michigan it's my local city government where I lived for thirty years I am disgusted to even stand here and have to be this stressed out nobody can even I went to court and the judge couldn't even give me a bill I said where's a bill you have you have a warrant for my arrest but no bill I'm I'm why what did I ever do besides say I don't want cops killing my family and deporting my husband you give these people more money why PTSD put some more money in the mental health and get the cops out of our neighborhood the kids don't wanna go to places where there's cops okay they get called snitches and bitches okay I'm sorry that's what kids say why why can't their voices be heard they're not here tonight okay little kids aren't here that feel threatened by police that's what they've told me I am I am elevating their words because they're frightened and it needs to stop okay it's it's not okay we are getting terrorized.
Thank you Cindy thank you for your comments. Hi welcome.
Hi my name is Jordan and I come here tonight in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ who is the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords I wanna let you know that he's put each of you in a position to wield the sword and to rule righteously and with equal weights and measures he's also given our officers a position to rule and enforce the law and I first wanna share my respect and my thankfulness for all of you for the position that you have but I do also wanna hold you accountable in areas that I think that we are struggling with but I want to know that you to know this is an encouragement this is something that if you make changes or not I'll either praise you or continue to to come here and talk to you guys but I respect you very much one more thing really quick is just that Jesus has said all authority in heaven and earth has been given to me to himself and that he will rule the nations so all of us will be be giving an account to him on the day that we die for all of our actions and when he puts someone in a position of power like yourself that standard is raised so I just want to remind you of that I wanna remind you that in in our city right now abortions are happening every single week the our preborn neighbors who are citizens in our city are being murdered and Michigan law says that it is illegal section seven fifty dot one four Chris Becker our county prosecuting attorney has stated on an M Live article that he will prosecute despite Whitmer's injunction so we have the law of Michigan saying it is illegal we have our prosecuting attorney saying he won't pick and choose laws and I've been calling the police every day that someone tells me they're going in to get an abortion not because I'm thinking it could be happening not because I'm guessing because someone is is prideful enough to say I don't want my kid and I'm gonna kill it and I'm healthy people are saying those things to me I'm calling the police and I'm being told the police will not come so so while this is happening there is murder happening in our very city and I wanna call you guys to act justly and to not just care about some of our neighbors but all of our neighbors equally I also want to call our police chief Winstrom to act righteously and to go forth and to arrest this man who is breaking the law in Grand Rapids every single day so I will leave you with this message with my last thirty seconds that Jesus came into the world fully God and fully man he lived a perfect and a sinless life and he came even though he was the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords he came and humbled himself suffered humiliation for us for all who would repent of our sins and believe upon him he didn't leave us with cold indifference to judge us he came in love and gave his own life and I would ask that you would share that same love for our neighbors who are being murdered in our city thank you.
Okay others who wish to be heard let let him speak even if you don't agree with him he has a right to be speak he has a right to speak.
Good evening Mayor and commissioners I would echo what my brother Jordan just said about your position and my respect for you and as well as the police my name is Daniel Scott as you know and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids but more importantly I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ I wanna appeal to you with the words of Jesus where he said in Matthew chapter eighteen whoso shall receive one such little child in my name receives me but whoso shall offend one of these little ones which believe in me it were better for him that a millstone were hung about his neck and he were drowned in the depth of the sea Jesus' words and I'd like to just comment I'm concerned about the violence in our city and been here for many years over thirty years and I see it increasing and scripture says we reap what we sow and I'm talking about we we as a city I'm a resident here and I pay my taxes I would like to add my support to what my brother Jordan said about the nineteen thirty-one law on the in the state constitution that this man at three twenty East Fulton should be arrested continuing to murder our fellow citizens and the fact that it's so racial this is from the CDC latest statistics abortion remains the number one cause of death among black people higher than all the other causes of death combined the CDC reports thirty percent of national abortions are African-American descent that means an estimated one hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-five black babies aborted or shocking three hundred and sixty every day every day and I keep hearing Black Lives Matter let's 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 support the young black people as well.
Let let do not interrupt him he has a right to be heard without being interrupted just as much as you do just as much as you do Mr. Scott please continue.
Thank you finally I'd like to I don't know if this is true but I've heard that there's a law or something on your desk about outlawing conversion therapy again I don't know if that's true I have to do my research but let me say in my last ten seconds I would say if you support that you also have to support the reverse where people are being coerced into changing or trying to change their gender thank you.
Alright okay your time's up alright others who wish to be heard.
Good evening my name's Christine Yerid I lifelong resident of Grand Rapids right now I'm in Grand Rapids Township and I've also worked within the city for many years.
Ma'am can you hold off?
Yeah thank you.
Mr. Scott can you please sit down your time's up okay please sit down go ahead.
Thank you law enforcement reform geared at treating people of color in a safe and fair manner is not anti-police it's pro-justice we're aware of on April four Officer Scher shot Patrick Loyola a young man an African who as Tanahesi Coats says he was in a black body and that's a risk and that shouldn't happen he should not have been shot in the back of his head while he was face down on the law by a police officer who was on top of him but I'm here today not to talk about blame but to ask for action a hundred and twelve days have passed since the shooting sixty-six days have passed since Scher was charged with murder the public deserves a report stating specific steps that you have taken with respect to make sure that people of color will not be shot during traffic stops or during other interactions with the police what steps have you all taken transparency is critical what people experts groups nonprofits and businesses have been a part of this process what's the timeline for completing steps that have not yet been implemented my request of course assumes that there have been steps that have been agreed upon and if there have not been why what proposals have been made who supports them who opposes them what obstacles have you faced and why have they not been implemented because of the important offices and jobs you hold you must take action to make it safe for people of color to interact with police and for the police in how they interact with people of color this is not an easy task I know that but it is your responsibility I personally known and professionally worked with police officers the majority of whom care about doing their jobs well I knew Officer Joe Taylor who was killed in nineteen eighty-six executing a arrest warrant I knew Officer Daniel Dice who was killed in ninety-four off duty jumping into Spring Lake to save somebody and he died of electrocution yet again implementing fair rules that will protect people of color from the police is not anti-police it's pro-justice I assume that many of you saw it your office or field of work because at least on some level you care about justice you must take action and share it with the community the integrity of our democracy criminal justice system and lives of well-being of people of color depend on it thank you.
Thank you for your comments appreciate it alright others who wish to be heard.
Hello my name is Dayton Heckman live in the first first ward comments were made about city of Grand Rapids being labeled as one of the best places to live in the United States that is merely I think out of convenience of its size it just happens to be a city big enough to have most of the things people want a city to have while being not too overcrowded I don't think that has too much to do with really anything the way the city is run I think the way the city is runs has a lot of improvements especially when it comes to policing a couple weeks ago well I was not here as there was a covid exposure in my family that's still going on a bunch a bunch of activists people who care about making the city a better place or a rest- place, were arrested here at this meeting. That's pretty messed up, and I'm disappointed in everyone who let that happen, and that means all of you, city commissioners and mayor. Next thing, I'd like to talk about, I'd like to talk about how we mentioned the Grand Rapids Police Department has had a number of scandals over the past years. And those are just the ones that the public has found out about through means of, you know, video cameras or public witnesses in the right place at the right time. Most would-be scandals that happen with police officers, the only, the main and only witnesses are going to always be other police officers. It just so happens that statistically speaking, when it comes to police officers who happen to blow the whistle, they're more likely to be fired. They're even more likely than any other whistleblowers of any other job to have charges put up against them. So I would like, in the city of Grand Rapids, this is one specific problem to solve with policing, and obviously, we could be here for hours talking about every institutional fundamental flaw with policing in the United States, but one that I could bring up that is maybe not talked about as much is the fact that police whistleblowers do not really exist, and when they do exist, they are fired, they are jailed, and it's, quite frankly, if you want to call yourself pro-police, you should be pro-police that call out bad police. And that's pretty, that's kind of something I wanted to bring up. There was a specific instance where this is, I am not, just want you to, I don't remember the specific name, this slips my mind at the moment, there was a man who, as a police officer, filed, basically reported to the media of a man who did a George Floyd-style murder. That police officer is currently facing, was facing criminal charges of 20 to 40 years. So please look into that, and please make sure that we have whistleblower protections of police officers in the city of Grand Rapids.
Thank you, Dayton. All right, others wish to be heard?
B Mahaji, third ward. Defunding the GRPD simply means reallocating some of the current funding to other designated places that better serve the community to prevent crime and thus reduce the need for policing, right? So police do not prevent crime. Crime prevention starts by investing into communities, and we have studies to confirm this. The third ward is the most neglected and underfunded, ergo, that is, the root cause of the crime rates and issues that plague our community. Instead of addressing the cause and providing a solution, which is in your power, you all choose to continue to allow for the current conditions, and in response to what those conditions create, you ignore the root cause of the problem and over-police with ill-trained, antagonistic, trigger-happy officers. You can't say that you care when your actions prove opposite. The only thing apparent to the people is that the only thing that you do care about is keeping your mouth shut and being complicit just long enough to get the approval you seek from the people unseeing, pulling the strings, endorsements, and investments. You all are protecting your own personal self-interests over people, and it's sick. You have put humanity last in your personal politics before first, and there will be a day when you will have to answer for that. Rosaling your double standards are exhausting. I don't think that the word decorum should come out of your mouth ever again, when you didn't even bat an eyelash or take a breath in the direction of O'Connor's outbursts and use of language. You threaten to continue to shut down meetings, yet multiple people have been killed and continuously brutalized by GRPD. So what you're saying is you care more about the decorum in here than you do for the human life out there. Because you'll threaten to shut down meetings over decorum, but you haven't threatened to shut them down for killing and brutalizing human beings and taking life. Your priorities are flawed and you're soaked in self-preservation. Patrick was criminalized because of his race and murdered in a state-sanctioned execution. You all have shown zero ability to empathize with the community, and you have shown less ability to care. Patrick died at the hands of an officer from a police department entrenched in racism and violence. Not only could this have been prevented, but to add further insult, you have yet to do anything to prevent this from happening again, and it will happen again. Patrick should be alive today. His death reflects a culture of policing in Grand Rapids which sets systemic indifference not only towards black lives, but all lives that don't fit into a certain tax bracket. We need to change that culture, and we need to change how we think about policing. Unfortunately, much like the structural warning signs we brought to your attention in the past three years, the recent incidents by GRPD and the city of Grand Rapids continue to provide evidence of a flawed system shaped by historical racial, economic, and social inequities. The former and present policing system continues to devalue human life. GRPD dehumanizes people on our dollar and with your agreement. And I'm just wondering when the last time you guys have been dehumanized, because I think it's about fucking time.
Okay, your time's up.
Hi, my name's Jose Rodriguez. I know some of you know me. I'm hoping after today, all of you take note of who I am. So I've lived in Grand Rapids for about six years. I moved back here from Chicago, because I, you know, after college, I went out there. It wasn't for me. I thought Grand Rapids could be my home. I thought Grand Rapids was like the place I was gonna stay. And now, after working in GRPS for five years, I'm running for a school board. I know some of you have served on the school board before. I don't know what kind of work you did back then, but I just wanted to talk about it. And I'm running because our kids and our communities deserve better. So as I watched your morning committee meeting with Eric Winstrom, I actually sat in disbelief at the idea of recruiting high schoolers and middle schoolers to someday serve on the GRPD, and the fact that that was being discussed, I think was disgusting, honestly. In no way, shape, or form do police officers belong in our schools. That's not just my belief, that's the belief of the majority of kids that I've worked with over the years, and that's the belief of many of my colleagues who believe in preventative and restorative practices, because police are reactionary, they're punitive, and they're ineffective at preventing crime. The GRPD can't simply say that they're gonna change, they can't say that they're respecting the sanctity of life, or that they're committed to de-escalation. That's something that they have to show us. I'm not gonna take the word of Eric Winstrom and say, "Oh yeah, you know, I trust the GRPD now because you said you would change." And as B listed earlier, a multitude of cases where the GRPD harassed, traumatized, and brutalized black and brown residents, I don't trust them with my kids at school, so I don't want them at our schools. Eric Winstrom mentioned in his presentation that people were more, that people wanted more policing and not less. I would honestly like to know who was surveyed and where he got those numbers. As Commissioner Jones said today, more police are not the answer. Nothing an officer does can effectively address the root cause of crimes. Eric Winstrom said it himself, "Police aren't the answer to all issues." He said he would do whatever he can to support the people that are really working hard for these root causes, and I propose taking some of the $60 million spent on the GRPD and reallocating it to community services. Because when we say defund the GRPD, what we're saying is reallocate the funds, as B said, reallocate the funds. I'm not asking to just simply take this money away and throw it away or burn it, we're asking to reallocate it into preventative measures for the community. Grand Rapids Public Schools is simply a microcosm of the larger community. We have issues, we have conflict, we have violence, but we handle it with a restorative framework in mind. Our system of policing and incarceration are archaic, inhumane, and can no longer be tolerated in a civilized society. Also, I have some materials if you want to check out my campaign. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hello again. My name's Christian. I live in the first ward. It's hard to come up here every week, or every two weeks, or when I can make it, because, you know, I'm a working-class citizen who still has to pay the high amount of rent in the city. And talk in front of you, because only a select few of you actually have ever reached out to me, or any of the activists behind me to speak, about any of the issues that we come up with every two weeks. And some people would rather ignore the problems, because they don't have much time in office, or because they think they've already achieved the goal they had when they ran for office, and that's just, in my opinion, as somebody who is a representative of the city, and somebody who is looked at as a leader in the city, that's disgusting. And there's a lot of double standards on this commission. It's a lot of people who have a lot of double standards, like you, Mayor Bliss, who, somebody says a cuss word up here, and you threaten to kick him out and get him arrested, but one of your commissioners who was elected to this office, agreed to the rules of this office, sits up there every day and talks about how he's a commissioner, told a citizen, somebody who he represents, to F off, and that he was tired of this quote-unquote shit. I think that you should be taking severe consequences against a commissioner who does that, especially one on a commission where you talk about decorum every week, and you talk about how we're the ones who come out and disrupt things, and when your commissioner does it, there's a double standard, that it's okay to do that? Also, this morning, a lot of the talk around the foot patrols and the neighborhoods, and that's kind of gross. I mean, you had a police officer, one of these officers shoot and kill somebody in the back of the head, murder them in the middle of a neighborhood, and your solution to preventing crime, which they haven't prevented crime for 10-plus years now, because the crime rate has just gone up along with their budget, you've, your solution is to send police to the neighborhoods and then come up here and have the chief lie about, you know, the chief and his captains lie about what the people said? Because I'm pretty sure when I campaigned for certain presidential candidates and certain people in the neighborhood, they were worried about police. They were worried about police coming into their neighborhoods and brutalizing their children. And to quote, to go back, piggyback off what that priest or whatever he is says about, you know, black people having higher rates of abortion, I mean, why would I want to bring a kid into a world where they're just gonna get killed by a police officer? Why would I want to bring a brown kid into this world when I'm scared that when they leave the house, that they're gonna be brutalized by the people that are supposed to protect them?
Thank you. Thank you, Christian. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Nikki, I live in the second ward. My first question, John O'Connor, it seems like you quit two weeks ago when you stormed out here, but you're still here. I think a lot of us, if we stormed out of our job like that, would not have a job to come back to, so I guess you're lucky that there's no recalls in place. But it is, like they said, it's exhausting to keep coming back here, but we have to keep coming back here because nothing has been changed since the murder of Patrick, since before that, when people were coming here telling you someone was gonna be murdered by the GRPD. We are also sick of this shit. I'm sorry, am I allowed to quote the commissioner? We do not want to be here. We have families, we have lives, we have jobs, careers, aspirations. We are here because of those aspirations. We are here because we believe in a better future for everyone, and it's not being given to everyone equally in this city. You are our representatives, and there is no give and take. It's like you are all sitting up here as placeholders, making sure the system keeps running, you know? I think there was a lot of talk when Donald Trump took office that he should divest from his businesses, yet I see people up here on this commission that open businesses while they're in charge of shaping policy that guards businesses, right? So why would you have any interest in changing the system? We don't have businesses to open. All we have is our lives, and that's all we're asking for. So Black Lives Matter, justice for Patrick.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello again. So, O'Connor, we're gonna be best buds now. You can't walk out of here saying, "Fuck this shit," and us not be best buds.
Hey, I'm calling commissioner.
I know, but I have told you.
Turn my bike back on or stop my time.
I'm not, I'm not to.
Or stop my time.
You can, I'll leave your time, but your mic's off.
Continuing.
I don't have to amplify.
Continuing.
I don't have to amplify profanity.
Okay.
I'm serious.
O'Connor, we got to be friends now, because you just walked out of here person all the hell.
Labor.
I mean, I've been thrown out of here for that. People have been arrested for that. Yet you get to come back? Oh, and then you get to have dinner with Mayor Bliss after to, what, console you? Do you feel our frustration? That's what happens when you're angry. That's what, that's what happens when you're mad, you're fed up, you're tired. That's what happens, right? Oh, you get bubbled up, right? Oh, you get angry. You don't even know what to do with yourself, because you're so damn angry. Oh, and you felt it that night. Oh, boy, and you felt it that night. So I just wanted to say, I mean, you might as well come on over to the dark side, because it seems you can't hold your peace over there. You can't hold your peace over there. Say, why don't you come be one of us, us, undecor, I don't know what you would call that. Now you get to come back for what you left. Are you running a carnival? Is, can I get tickets somewhere? Is there, like, food somewhere I can get? This is a shit show.
All right.
The decorum is wear when your own people can't even do it, and then you don't even, there's no repercussions, there's no consequences. But yet you threaten us with a misdemeanor for disturbing the peace, yet your own employees do it right in your face, and you sit there looking at you look all the time. You know how he acted that night? It's how most of these officers act, right? They're so frustrated, they're so ego-driven, and then they get out here and they control these streets. They patrol the streets of people they don't even see as whole humans, right? And then they're so frustrated, they're so angry, and when that unhuman person they believe is talking back to them, what do they do? They get angrier. Then they become violent, but then they turn it over on them, because they're violent, they're resisting, they're assaulting, right? So don't tell me about decorum until you put consequences on O'Connor. Mr. Ives over there, who'll be looking at every woman over here, because my wife hasn't been back to a meeting in a while because he stared her down so damn much, okay? Probably on the predator's list down below, but give consequences, and maybe other people will follow suit.
All right, your time's up.
Yeah.
Your time's up.
Time's always up.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. What this world needs more than anything in this hour is people with courage to stand for righteousness. The Book of Judges is relevant to where we are living. We are living in a time where the lines between right and wrong are being erased. Everyone is doing what is right in their own eyes, doing what they believe to be right, their own perspective and arrogance. The idea that every man can define for himself what is right and what is wrong is foolishness, insanity. Proverbs says, "A fool is right in his own eyes, and professing to be wise, they became fools." When the lines have been removed, when you have no morals or values, your perspective gets distorted, and distortion leads to confusion, corruption, and destruction, a crooked and perverse generation, the downward spiral of a God-fearing society, a society in moral chaos, a people who do not believe in moral standards, where nothing is right, nothing is wrong, lawlessness abounds, the slaughter of our innocent, the breakdown of the family. We've created racism where it doesn't exist, a society trying to redefine what a man or a woman should be, and the wicked have launched a campaign to defund and dismantle our police and strip them of their power to restrain evil. Leaders and government and religious organizations working against that which is good and promoting evil, a people that glorify the criminal and speak evil of our police, a culture that has become the enemy of those that speak truth and do good. Agree with it or not, but there is right and there is wrong, and we don't get to redefine what God has established. We need to stand against the corruption and the perversion of truth. We need people that would draw lines, that make a distinction between right and wrong, people that are willing to speak the truth and call wrong, wrong. I am paraphrasing here, but my Bible says to be strong and courageous, stand firm and put on the armor of God, so when the evil day comes, you will be able to withstand the fiery arrows, the assaults of the wicked. And having done all, stand. After you have done everything you can do, stand firm. Standing in Hebrew is a military term, a critical hold in the heat of battle. He says, "If you stand firm under the relentless assaults of the enemy, I will make you victorious and triumphant." It's time to stand and contend for what's right. I stand with Officer Christopher Schur and the Grand Rapids Police Department.
All right, thank you. Thank you, your time's up. All right, let her speak. Do not, do not scream at people who are, who are speaking their mind. They have a right to be heard just as much as you, even if they disagree with you. It's, I am, I have, right?
He's waiting.
Okay, all right.
Tell her to be quiet. Tell her to be quiet while people are speaking. I'm trying to listen.
Yes, please, please, just respect people and give them a right to speak uninterrupted and, and in a way that they don't feel like they're being attacked because they don't agree with you.
Thank you.
All of us have a right to speak our mind in this space. All right, sir, I'm sorry.
So, city commissioners, mayor, I'm Paul Benjamin. I'm here because last month I was in attendance to observe how meetings like this are generally conducted. That meeting was my first ever. Please believe me when I say that I have chosen these next words.
Can you please stop interrupting the speaker? Let, let him, will you, security, can you please come over and try to, if you have a hard time standing in line, then you are welcome to sit down. Okay, ma'am.
She asked me to stand 16.
Okay.
I'm not even talking to the woman.
I'm sorry. Ma'am, I'm sorry about that. And if we can please just, if you don't want to stand to wait to be heard, you're welcome to sit down. You don't have to stand up. Mr. Benjamin, I'll restart your time.
Oh.
All right, can you restart his time, please? Sorry about that.
So, it's been a while since I did any public speaking, but I'm very loquacious, which means I like words, so, anyway. Believe me when I say I've chosen the next words carefully. And Patrick Loyoya was killed by GRPD Officer Christopher Schur, and there needs to be Not necessarily in the form of some kind of punishment. There's many forms of justice, and I'm not someone who can do much more than armchair one of those. And I do hope that each and every one of you is truly taking the words of everyone who speaks here about justice for Patrick Loyoya to heart. Thank you. Thank you. Loyoya, did I get that right? Thank you. Take their words to heart, not because of what they say or how they say it, but because these are things you would perhaps say if you found yourself in their place. I also hope that you do not ignore anything said here because you feel personally offended by it, whether it was intended to hurt you or not, because as city commissioners, but more importantly, as humans, you need to pay attention to everything said here. And I've heard other people mention that word tonight, humans, humanity. It's very important to me also. The people who speak here, they don't just think their voice is important, they know it is. Regardless of what words are used, most folks here represent more than just themselves. They represent many other people, not just in this community, but around the world. So when you have a choice to make about justice, I recommend you take the time to check yourself. Do what you do out of love. It's another word I've heard used here, although I haven't necessarily always agreed with the context. Everybody's got a different, different definition. But at the end of the day, it's not about what you changed, it's not about whether or not what you did, how you changed it, it is about if what you did was done from a place of love. Now, at my job in IT, I'm able to see the big picture while monitoring details of critical programs that affect all aspects of business so it can thrive. You are all in the business here of seeing the big picture of what's going on in this city, giving your hearts and minds to the details of the human interactions in the city, so you can make this city better. Changes are happening in the world today faster and faster, all the time. I'm a big computer nerd, I love the internet, I'm 50 years old, but the new generations that's grown up with it, pay attention.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Deandre Jones. Wanted to display, if y'all can hear this. This is at the Grand Woods Lounge. I was there when all of those people got shot. I seen the pool of blood. I seen all of those shots, like 50 shots, right? It was a girl that got shot, they had to wrap banders around her leg to stop the blood. It was a guy on the side of the bar, he had a lot of bullet holes in him. I seen this. If it was anybody in this community, believe it or not, I would still have the same energy to ask those police officers to get these people in these cars if the ambulance didn't show up, to make sure that these people could stay alive, because we had a recent person, guy that died downtown. I used to go to high school with that young man, and he ended up dying, and the police just left him there. He was there for 15 minutes, I watched the video for 16 minutes, and he was shot, and nobody took him to the hospital. And this is video footage of me actually asking these police officers to get these people into the hospital, don't matter if you are an ambulance, a first responder, those are the things that make people like police officers or like human beings, that's a sense of having a sense of humility. See, it's not funny when you actually see these people get shot and you see several shootings. I've seen several shootings. I've seen several shootings in this city, a lot of the ones that's been going downtown. I've been seeing this. And like I said, it don't matter if you guys, people don't like me, I would keep that same energy, because at the end of the day, even if you don't want the best for me, I want the best for everybody in the city, regardless if you don't like me, because that's who I am. I don't care if people don't like me, I don't care if we have disagreements, we can always come to terms. We could always disagree, agree to disagree, and still go on about our days. And I still, if I like you, I like you. If I don't like you because you don't like me, then that's cool. But I just want you guys just to understand, when I come out here and I do this community work and I see the shooters, and then I go to Martin Luther King Park, and I go to King Park, and I make sure that I'm out there, and I'm out there with these kids right after I see a shooting and big puddles of blood, I got the puddle of blood right there if y'all want to see it. You know what I'm saying? When I actually see these shots and you see several shots and you see people get hit, and you see somebody, so you see people in the streets, a dude in the streets, his friends didn't even help him that he came to the bar with. If nobody put him in that, if people in the neighborhood and people in these communities and these low impoverished communities didn't save him, that man would have been dead. So let's, let's put our egos aside. I'm not an egotistic person, I care about people, I have a heart for people, I love people. Y'all can hear the passion in my voice. I can post this on Facebook, I can post this anywhere. I care about people, I love people, I'm here to serve people. So make sure when we doing our jobs, make sure when we creating laws, make sure you got people in mind, because we're all service of people. We don't protest, I didn't protest with people just to be noticed, I cared because I cared about people. I cared about getting information to people. So make sure when we making these laws, make sure when we out here in the community, you understand that it's people that see shooters that see it before the police even get there, then try to make sure the police do their job. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Lindsay, I'm from the third ward. One thing I wanted to touch on before I start with my main point is 24% of wrongful convictions are based on bad crime scene evidence. So that includes multiple factors, but like, fingerprints and things of that nature do fall into that 24%. And that should be included in your overall police budget. You guys get 39%. You guys get majority of the city's budget. When it comes to where things are proportioned within that, you guys get the highest percentage. Not you guys, but GRPD, which is pretty much enforced by you all. The main point I wanted to speak about is there was a plethora of news articles that came out this week against the department, well, against GRPD, but in regards to the civil rights violations and complaints and charges that are going against GRPD. There's two formal complaints at this point, but there are many in the works. The two that are noted in most articles are from 2017 and 2020. But my friend B listed multiple that have just happened this year and within the past 48 months, right? So we know it continues to grow very disproportionately on our black and brown communities. I did want to just make aware to the audience here and everyone listening that Michigan law prohibits discrimination in areas of employment, education, housing, public accommodation, public service, which is our Board of Commissioners, law and law enforcement. Discrimination includes these protected categories. That includes race, religion, color, national origin, age, sex, disability, genetic information, marital status, family status, height, weight, and arrest record. I know multiple people in this very room right now who have been discriminated, discriminated against on these very things, and I encourage you all to file complaints. All you have to go is to the Michigan Civil Rights Department website and file the complaint. You can get to it from the Michigan.gov website to file the complaint. You have 180 days to file this complaint, and I know a lot of you have been brutalized and discriminated against in just the past couple months, I've watched it. I've watched it for the course of staying in Grand Rapids, which has been over three years now I've watched it. But just in the past couple months, I have numerous examples, I think we all do, a lot of them are even on video, and all of these folks who I'm mentioning fall within these protected categories. So I encourage you all to file your complaints, and if you've witnessed it, you can still file. Thanks.
Thank you.
Justice for Patrick.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Kieran again, second ward. I just wanted to continue on a thought from earlier about how we are catering to tourism in this city and how I find it to be a completely backwards approach when the people in our city are asking for basic needs. I think recently, a young, expecting mother who was moved from her place of rest to make way for the art festival, or Festival of the Arts. We knew where she was for a while, and we're able to provide her with prenatal vitamins, food, clothing, blankets, but when the cops came through and swept the area, we, we lost her. I don't know if she's been found again yet, but I'm saying that because we, we claim to care so much about the unborn in this city, some of us, and others of us claim that police officers are righteous people, just doing their job, some of them are good. I don't understand how anybody in their right mind could go through and kick a homeless mother out of her sleeping spot with, with no other plans, by the way, no suggested route of action beyond that. I also would like to speak about the horror of last, the last commissioners' meeting. That was scary, like, that was really frightening, and it was off, it was handled terribly, like, I know people who aren't here tonight because of that, they were too afraid to come back. They're too afraid to just come and speak to their commissioners, which is sad, because like you said, this is a place where all our voices to be heard, but some of us feel too threatened by the threat of arrest to come and have our voices be heard. So I, I do want to say I've noticed a difference in tonight. You let little remarks and cheers go by the wayside, which I think is how it should be and should have been for a long time, and it would have de-escalated the situation last meeting and would have allowed us to get to this point in the evening, which hasn't happened very often recently. Yeah, I also, again, I would like to encourage you to look at affordable housing, we talk about it all the time, doesn't actually happen, or so many things disqualify people, like, you can't have a pet. If you want to live in affordable housing, most places, they are not pet-friendly. Or if you do have a pet, you then have to pay an extra $200 a month. We shouldn't punish people for wanting a companion and also not having the finances to pay out, out the ass for a rent, anyway.
Hi. My name is Amy, I'm a Grand Rapids resident, third ward, and I'm here to speak about the city noise ordinance with some specific concerns about the language there and how I think that it's resulting in unequal enforcement of that ordinance. Specifically, when I have tried to get that ordinance enforced, when citizens are being harassed and intimidated by amplified sound being used, officers have shown up and basically said that they are unable to enforce if it's not happening when they show up or without being able to define what average conversational level is, that's the language in Noise Ordinance 2019-71, which is section 9.63 of the City Code. Specifically says that no person shall operate any device creating amplified sound on any public property or right-of-way louder than average conversational level at a distance of 100 feet away. It's, it's quite specific and more specific than the last version, but I think not specific enough. If officers show up and they don't know what that, that level is, and they show up saying they would need a decibel reader, but they didn't bring a decibel reader, there are just some issues there with enforcement. I would encourage more specificity, maybe defining what average conversational level is in decibels and having officers have a policy to go out with a decibel reader when there is a call about that. I mean, for those who might be interested, this occurs outside the local abortion clinic, and folks are intimidated and harassed from receiving healthcare services, which I do not feel is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
My name is Erica Cage, and I am third ward. Mayor Bliss, many times over and over, you've admonished us about decorum. However, I invite you to hold your own committee to the same standards, whether it's Reverend Moody explicitly lying on activists, or Mark Washington making up statements about us supposedly intimidating him at his house, to commissioners like O'Connor bluntly swearing and throwing temper tantrums because they didn't like us using our activists and revolutionaries, using their freedom of speech in a way they didn't like. Contrary to your words, Mark Washington, I am not a hooligan, I am a veteran, which means I put my life on the line for justice. Unlike you, I wasn't paid for that. I have never been to jail until I was issued a warrant I did not know for using my freedom of speech. I worked since I was 14, I became a homeowner at age 16, and I am a college graduate and a member of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated. I am not a hooligan. I am a citizen who pays her taxes and therefore legally able and valued to my rights of justice and the pursuit of walking down the street without being killed. Reverend Moody, with emphasis on Reverend, I ask you to think about the fact that you are a man of the cloth, but yet you make money both ways, on that pulpit and at your funeral home. So whether we die or not in the streets, you will profit. So as I was arrested for speaking my mind, I'll say this now, how about we stop focusing on decorum and start focusing on justice and the pursuit of rights to life? You want to talk about babies and African-American babies? What about when those babies grow up and become black men and women? Can we value their life then, too? I ask you to all stop and think before you became members of this committee, you were members of this society. And if you feel comfortable enough walking around knowing that your neighbor could be killed off the contents of their skin, maybe you should reevaluate yourselves. Justice for Patrick.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Casey Thompson, third ward. I missed you last week, Yasasi. You had mentioned that, I had mentioned your blinking, linear's hair and stuff like that, but when I had mentioned that stuff, it was in reference to you not paying attention to us while we speak, and then us following through with playing like, your hair disappears on the green screen, right? In, in the, in the respect that we don't get chores, you don't get ours back. And then your comment was as if you weren't listening to me. Shocker. Okay, I got a, I got a We Are GR type newspaper that comes through, right? And it had a huge list of lead pipes that are being replaced. Awesome, that's so cool. It's just that my street wasn't on that, and I'm still getting the pamphlet in the mail saying not to drink the water or bathe. And so maybe instead of kayaks, or maybe instead of you guys getting races, you could like pass out Brita filters to everyone on my block? You know? Racism was declared a public health crisis by you guys in 2019. Did you forget? I read this article, right? Grand Grand Rapids Police Department under investigation, which led to discrimination charges, wonder where that's going to go, because you know, qualified immunity, but there's hope. Crime prevention is resources. Crime prevention is resources? Crime prevention is resources? I just wanted to state a couple of facts about America, we're the number one spenders in defense, we actually spend more than every other country combined. You know what else we're number one? Number of incarcerated citizens per capita. So anyways, defund the police. Kirk, oh my gosh, Kirk, where have you been? Why didn't you say anything, right? I got this flyer, I'm hoping it's not like just a joke for people to not vote for you, but I seen this thing, and it was saying how you like stood up to not take relief money and give 500K to the police department for community training, and you were saying like use the balloon of money that you already have for that training, and like you were the only one that had voted to defund the police? Like, why aren't you standing up and saying this? Because there's a huge, huge group of population whose vote you could have, like, is that real? Because like, you got me, man, the white man is up here, standing up for us, like, what? I did not know, like, I'm stoked. Hope, little ounce of hope. You can hear us? You can? Like, what? Yes. So I thought we should, this actually came from my kid, maybe you should place a rule while you're doing a forum or decorum or whatever you call this, okay, like, no phones for your staff and for the police that are in here, because that's what y'all spend most of your time on. And then I just wanted to say that you said you weren't bothered, but this line and your media statement says otherwise.
Time's up, thanks.
Hi there, I'm Colleen from Grand Rapids. My first meeting, first of all, I want to address you, Mayor. The reason that I cheered those three people on was because I was hearing a lot of filth from the people in front of me, okay? So now I know the rules, and I apologize for that, okay? So what I want to say is I have never been so disgusted with the disrespect and the foul language that happened in this kind of forum, and Mayor, the fact that you allowed the foul language, interesting. So this is what I have to say. Chief Winstrom and I, we've been back and forth, and in the very beginning, I had some very strong harsh words for him. And I realized, even though I disagreed with him, it was still my job to show him respect. And I apologized for the things I said, even though I disagree with him. What we have lost in this society is respect for one another, regardless of what you believe. And, you know, the police, they saved my life literally a year and a half ago, literally saved my life. I owe them, I always will. I also graduated from the academy many, many years ago. I did not work as an officer, I worked in the juvenile system. And I'll tell you what, any young person that thinks about being a police officer now, I tell them no. Their lives are at risk, they're disrespected, I don't know how they, I don't know how they hold up, I don't. What I wish is all of this hate to stop. It's so draining to me. And, do you hear this?
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, it's typical. So, you know, we were all once babies, right? All of us. And some of us were loved, and some of us were not. But we have a purpose here on this earth, and what that purpose is, is to help one another, to be there for another, even if you don't agree with them.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome, and thank you, and I'm going to be coming here every two weeks.
All right, thank you. Do not yell at her, do not yell at her. You know what, you know what respect is? Is not intimidating someone after they speak when you don't agree with them. She has a right to come and not feel intimidated in this space by people screaming. No, it, you know what, it is my turn to speak for a minute. You know what, I am serious. People have a right to come here and speak their mind without people in the audience trying to intimidate them. Respect other people's opinions. I haven't started your time yet.
Okay.
I'm serious. I've heard from enough people who come here, and they feel like they are being scrutinized and intimidated after they speak their mind. You know what, this is, I am serious, I will adjourn this meeting. I will. I have, Mark, I know, I'm sorry, I do not want to adjourn, I don't want to adjourn, but people have a right to be heard. We have all night.
Oh yeah, we do. Let's go.
All right, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Cynthia. So, you guys are taking notes, I hope everyone else listening is taking notes. I'm going to give you a few ways on how you can stand with Scher. Write this down. You can put money on the phone so Scher can call you from prison, using the number 972-798-039... Excuse me. You can put money on his books, you can deposit the money 24 hours a day via the kiosk in any lobby of the prisons, you can go to any prison. You could also go to expressaccount.com and put money on Christopher Scher's books to stand with Scher. Jpay.com is where you make a Jpay account, so you could email Christopher Scher. You could also buy Christopher Scher books to send to him to read in his prison cell at amazon.com or barnesandnoble.com, except don't buy him any dictionaries in Spanish or Swahili, because racism is universal. Make it a gift, yes. Quarterly, he can get a secure pack at, you can purchase those secure packs at www accessescatalog.com. Limit of $100. They do have bars of soap. Also, backing the blue, if you have loved ones on the police force, I suggest you encourage them to quit, because we're holding everybody accountable. Christopher Scher is going to prison, and you could be next, you could be next, you motherfuckers could be next.
Mark, I'm sorry you didn't get a chance to speak last time.
Hi, I'm Mark from Grand Rapids. Lightning Parks is turning in his grave.
No, Mark, speak to us, this is a time for us, for you to speak to us.
I'm trying to understand.
Let him speak, let him speak.
No, he was, he was the mayor of Grand Rapids during the 60s.
Thank you.
Black mayor.
Go ahead.
Now, the last meeting was unbearable. Now, okay, somebody's acting, seriously, somebody acting all wild and stuff, fine, kick them out. But what I saw, but what I saw on video was disturbing. You had several officers took one individual to the ground, and yet the female officer took him down to the ground like Aaron Donald, before handcuffing him and taking him away. I was waiting for her to get up and go, size me up, size me up, size me up! Not good, below not good. And while that was going on, Commissioner O'Connor goes for Adam Baydoun, and then cuts his way out here, and checks out. Below not good. Can't have that here. Can't have it. As for Reverend Scott and his, some of that on abortions, I guess he didn't care about the 10-year-old girl who was raped, and they go across state lines from Ohio to Indiana to get an abortion, but he didn't care, he probably support that anyway. He better, he better, he better get his mind, he better get his mind set up. And as for the individuals who are talking about good versus evil, this isn't a message of the universe. Stay off of Fox News, stay off of OAN, stay off of Newsmax with that crap. Some of that nonsense can have you, can have them hung off the base of the Michael Callahan Pat Timmer Memorial Bridge. Yes, I support good cops, but not bad cops. That is why we need George Floyd, Justice and Police Act. Remove Jagger Hoover's name off the FBI building, remove George Ross's name on the Tuna Mobile, Alabama, Justice for Patrick Niola, Justice for Jalen Walker.
Thank you, Mark.
And free Brendan Eagle.
Thank you, Mark.
My name is Donnie, and I live in the Third Ward. You heard me talk earlier, so I only have a little bit of time, three minutes. Okay, here we go. Minneapolis, New York City, Cook County, Portland, Austin, these are all cities that are way bigger than us, right? Way bigger, meaning bigger by population, bigger by funding, right? They have more, and let me tell you, Minneapolis, they got 106 billion, New York City, they got 101 billion, Cook County, they got 8.04 billion, Portland, they got $6.7 billion. And I'm going to run you through how much their police officers get, too. 434 million for Austin, 484 million for Minnesota, 586 million for New York City, 684 million for Cook County, and then we got 284 million for Portland, right? So, the reason why I'm saying this, because they successfully defunded their police officers, and then they kept going, right? Because they successfully reallocated that money into something which is what? Their community. Resources is crime prevention, that was said earlier, so let me break that down for you. What does that mean? What does crime prevention mean when we say resources? That means mental health, that means health insurance, that means, that means affordable housing, that isn't just broken down by, hey, you should sign up and put in this application and wait for three months. No, that's not what we're saying. We are not trying to wait three months in order to get into a house that we paid taxes, rightfully so, for the past 18 damn years, and then you, and then we get on a waiting list for what? Three to six months? So that somebody else who makes three times the rent and meets the requirements could come into our city and settle in! I said defund GRPD because I want those, I want those funds reallocated, reassured into the community that pays the most taxes here. That's what we want. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about affordable food, we're talking about housing for our unhoused population that's been living down in the middle of Grand Rapids and being pushed around by these thugs, and also the Grand Rapids Fire Department. This city pays groups of individuals to push around our unhoused population instead of creating a solution. And it's the same when people come up here and we say justice for Patrick, and we say Black Lives Matter. Instead, we're scrutinized and antagonized, instead of saying, how can we help you? Not any single one of you have gave us an email, letter, comment, question, or concern about how we can be helped! And yet you're still questioning why the hell we're up here, and demonstrating so much passion! Let me tell you something, since we are talking about religiousness, since we're talking about the light, right? Since we're talking about something that, since we're talking about that and that was said, right? Did your God tell you that if somebody's sitting on your lawn, and they've been starving for months and years and years and years and years, is it your job to go outside and ask them, why are you starving? Is it your job to push them around?
Thank you, your time's up. Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
All right, can you hear me? All right. Good evening, Mayor Bliss, Commissioners, fellow Grand Rapidsians. My name is Matt Palmer, I live on Cherry Street. I'm here to speak briefly about cycling infrastructure, traffic safety, and making our streets safer for everybody. After coming around two weeks ago, I spoke with a bunch of city staff on my discussions with Mr. Sante Kane, and with Ms. Kristen Bennett in the Traffic Department, particularly enlightening, and I, yeah, I'm just glad to see that there are responsive city civil servants here. The problem is they're just not getting the resources they need, like, you know, you talk to anybody on the road crews on the street, or folks in sessions that, you know, get set up after, you know, people like me come and complain, anyone who's speaking honestly about it will tell you that they're just, they're under-resourced. Like, we're, we're able to allocate, it seems, huge sums of money to all sorts of things that are useful for vehicular, like, large vehicle infrastructure for people who are commuting in from Cascade, but we really don't seem to have any, any room in the budget for very low-hanging fruit, like concrete bike lane protectors, additional roundabouts, that sort of thing. These, these measures are low-hanging fruit, they would save lives, they would improve quality of life, heck, they might, they might even improve property values, honestly, like, you know, a green leafy street with slow traffic is a lot better than a, than a, you know, big multipurpose strode. So I'll continue digging in on this and talking with you folks, and I hope to work with you to make that, you know, make that part of our city a little bit better. But, that, that doesn't happen unless larger city institutions are functioning. The meeting two weeks ago was an embarrassment. Glad to see everybody here, that is an improvement on last time, but the fact that we're like talking about mandatory attendance to meetings for which, you know, you folks are paid, really speaks to the level of dysfunction here. That dysfunction filters down to the police department, that dysfunction filters down all sorts of different places, that dysfunction filters down to the paint on the roads that doesn't get put down when it needs to get put down, that dysfunction filters down everywhere. So accountability starts at the top, I really, like, what happened two weeks ago was not in the best traditions of American democracy, it's not the kind of representation we should expect. And, yeah, I mean, you know, cutting things off before that gentleman was able to speak, police provoking fistfights in the hallway, we all saw that video, a bunch of other things like that, you know, ultimately, if there isn't some accountability around these things, there will be on Election Day. Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Still Libby, still live in the Second Ward. I was really upset at the last meeting, too. I mean, I was sitting in the room, and I saw who you were asking to leave because of the decorum issue. And then later on, I was on social media, and I saw the video of who got arrested, and they weren't the same people. And I'm not completely understanding why the police went after them, I saw the video, I mean, it was a small hallway, I think the chief said that somebody was pushed into an officer, but I didn't really see that. And if they were pushed into the officer, it was because, do you know how many cops are sitting in this building, apparently, during these meetings? I went onto the crime mapping website, and during the time of this meeting, two weeks ago, where we had all these Grand Rapids police officers who need so much money hiding in this building, there were five crimes committed. One of them was somebody's vehicle was stolen. I mean, I don't understand the fear you have of us, I don't understand the fear that the Grand Rapids police have of us. I mean, I have lived... I mean, I have lived in this city my entire life. I don’t need chain link around my house. And I’m kind of a mouthy person when people make me mad and nobody has taken a gun to me. Nobody’s tried to beat me up, nothing like that. So why are you so scared of us? And if the police are so scared of us and they need chain link to protect the building, maybe they shouldn’t be police officers. I mean, it’s not my point to come here and to be insulting to people because I know that, well, I just can’t do that. I was, I’m a white girl from, raised in the 80s, we just, we’re not allowed to do that. But I just don’t understand why you would be a police officer if you’re so scared. I mean, I’ve told you before, I’ve worked for the Domestic Assault Response Team here in Grand Rapids, which I don’t think exists anymore. And we would go into people’s homes where there were batterers. Guess what? Nobody was beating us up, yet the cops need so many police officers to answer 1 call, 1 call. It just, it amazes me sometimes. And like I said, I grew up in this city, I grew up on Fuller. I grew up blocks, 3 blocks from Martin Luther King Park. If you guys want to know what crime was, you should have been here in the 80s and the 90s and the payphones and the beepers and the drug dealings that were happening in this city. And that was crime. And we didn’t have police shoot, well, we did. I’m sorry, I, I witnessed it as a child. One of my first memories of police in the city of Grand Rapids in like 1982 was cops taking down a domestic, both the husband and the wife in a domestic dispute. That was a forming memory for me in this city and about the police officers. But I wanted to say, during the meeting last week when we were talking about decorum, there were 3 white men having a full-on conversation at the beginning of public comment in the middle of the room. One of them was a city employee, one was a CEO of Dwelling Place, and I don’t know who the third one was. And you didn’t say a word to them. I couldn’t hear through them.
Thank you.
Arianna, 3rd Ward. Sorry, I’m a bit shaky. Not because I’m scared of talking in a group of people, I’m not afraid of talking to a group of people at all, don’t get me wrong. I’m afraid because I’m gonna have to sit outside the jail tonight waiting for my stepdad to get out because he gets arrested for no reason. Mayor Bliss, you end these meetings and when you do, you say, oh, I have to adjourn this meeting, I have important official business to get to. What business is more official than this? This is your official business. What we’re doing here, listening to us, that is your official business, there’s nothing more official. Also Kurt, you’ve been up here just getting it the whole time? You’ve been up here helping us the whole time and you were just quiet? I want to know why you’re quiet, but at the same time, I do know because you wanted to keep your job, you didn’t, you, you’ll be shamed on if you, if you say anything. I’m 14. And if I were to get raped and got pregnant from it and I got an abortion, the person who raped me would have less time than I would. It’s disgusting, it’s scary, it’s so scary. It makes me scared to do anything without somebody by my side because anything can happen. And then if it does, then what? I have to, I have to raise a kid at 14? It’s, it’s so crazy, it’s so crazy. And people will be with it too and it’s like, it’s murdering, it’s murdering, but what? What happens when, what happens when I’m 14, raped and then forced to have a child and care for it? It’s insane. I’m gonna hold, I’m gonna hold the rest of my time because it’s a waste of time, so I won’t say anything because I want to waste your time just like you waste hours.
Defund GRPD and justice for Patrick.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Shannon Tanis and I’m from the 1st Ward. My public comment is regards to the comp controller’s response to my meeting with him on June 17th about the fraudulent holiday charges that are being committed on the park at Moto. From January 2019 to May 2022, there was $81,070.69 that were obtained by the city and they were supposed to be notifying the app developer of the holiday schedules. So your city’s administration and efficiency caused the collection of $81,070.69 fraudulently. Now, the park, mobile park, the city attorney’s office, and the city treasurer has incited themselves to not refund the revenue back to the people. If someone else doesn’t step up to the plate and realize these are deceptive practices and they are not entitled to these revenues and fix this, I will have no other choice but to file a lawsuit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Others wish to be heard?
My name is Bob and I don’t live in Grand Rapids because I hate Grand Rapids, but I’m about to have to live in Grand Rapids because where I live is not accessible to the city bus line. So one of the things I wanted to say was, other things that have been reiterated, but one thing I really wanted to speak on, I actually got all the way down to my car, got in my car, I just left because you were being ridiculous, Mayor Bliss, and I realized I, oh, I remembered that you had a bunch of trans people arrested last week, or last time. And I got pissed, I got real pissed actually, because I’m on the board of the Pride Center. I’m at Amazon, I have a position where I help the LGBT community there. And I know there’s a bunch of Christians in the back that don’t like what I have to say about me and LGBT, well, they can leave if they don’t like it because that’s part of America too. So, it was part of Grand Rapids. So one of the things that, Mayor Bliss, one of the things that you harped on when you ran, because I voted for you, I’ll never do it again, is that you stood with the LGBT community. Well, that’s bullshit. Sorry, excuse my decorum, I’m just following after one of our leaders. Putting trans people in jail. I’m sure that none of you really care about what that does or what that looks like, but let’s say I go to jail. I’m a trans man, I go to jail. Probably would go to the women’s jail, thank God. Because the way that the men are treated by the officers there, by the male officers there, I know they’re being raped, I know they’re being treated badly because I know friends that are males that are being raped there, but there’s no difference in the women’s facility either. But when you send trans people to jail, you don’t have a policy of where they go. They’re kind of confused, so they get there, they get searched by whichever fucking officer is there, excuse me, whichever officer is there to do the search. Then you put them in the wrong cell, you put them with the wrong people. People are put in cells where they’re brutalized. They’re treated by officers terribly. I could not imagine being trans and going to jail, but I’m gonna come to every commission meeting, Mayor Bliss, and I will not have decorum if you keep arresting trans people and I will be one of those trans people in jail. You better find a place to put me because I’m not going to the women’s jail. And you’re not sending me to the men’s jail to be raped either. Because you don’t have any control of your, of your officers to control anybody there. You have people there that are wrongfully there, so they’re angry, so they’re doing whatever they can to hurt people. That’s the same issue that you have in your city. The same issue you have with your officers. They’re mad, they’re tired, they don’t like their job. So what, who do they take it out on?
Us.
Us. Their wives at home. Statistics for police officers beating their wives, astronomical. I want to follow after John O’Connor.
Thanks, thank you. All right, we’re gonna close that public comment period and I’ll turn to my colleagues and I’ll start down here with Commissioner Moody.
Thank you all for your comments tonight.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to take a moment to lift up the work that was talked about earlier this morning, the work of Cure Violence. I want to recognize Eric Brown from the Urban League as well as Stephen Jackson and Dr. Wurst who came to present on the activities of Cure Violence since its inception last year and in particular, addressing the issue of, of community violence in our city. And was just very encouraged by the direction in which they’re going with their work and recognizing the need for even more resources to go toward prevention when it comes to the area of, of crime and community violence. I do, I do believe that it is, has a lot to do with addressing and focusing more on root causes. I believe that, and I believe that when it comes to the work of Cure Violence, I’ve often said it’s just, it is not the, the, the answer to the issues, the deals that we have, but I think that it speaks to what’s necessary, which is to have greater presence in community so that decisions that are made on a daily basis are, are perhaps disrupted as it pertains to potentially committing crime. And so I just really want to take a moment to lift up that work of Cure Violence and I’m hopeful that they can continue to, to, to be effective in the work that they’re doing, but also, again, I would like to see us even lean in more along the prevention side and see if there are other models that are best practice that really speak to reducing community violence and addressing it, again, more from a preventative measure than anything. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner O’Connor?
No comment.
Commissioner Linier? Commissioner Linier?
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Linier?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I’d like to do something similar to Commissioner Jones and just kind of go back to our committee of the whole meeting today. I, I think that the holistic approach to addressing public safety in general, I think that was talked about today was helpful. City manager, I’d like to see if there is a way to, to make that conversation digestible for the community. I know it’s probably over an hour and a half, but however we can make that available, I think we, people would find it valuable to watch because many of the things that I’ve written down over the past few months were some of the programs that have been implemented. And I think it would be great to, so that the community can see that some of their advocacy is coming to fruition. Thanks to everyone who provided comments tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Rappaport.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I do want to start by just thanking the chief for such an extensive presentation this morning. I knew that that took a lot of work and it was good to have your, your team here as well to answer questions. I was incredibly encouraged by the early success of the co-response model, it’s only been going for a few weeks now, but, but also Cure Violence. And I agree, this holistic approach to public safety is something that makes me really hopeful. All of those things working in harmony are, are what we are gonna need to, to address the, the extreme violence that we’ve had the last couple of years. So, we have a couple of upcoming engagements this fall and looking forward to talking all that the chief presented today through with the community and talking about our next steps. And, you know, I heard you wanting to see that plan and, and today was the, the first day of the next chapter of this discussion in the city of Grand Rapids and I, I hope you’ll lean in and participate and be a part of it.
Thanks. Commissioner Sassi?
Thank you, Mayor. I’ll second the comments about our day-to-day. I think I just wanted to take a look back of the last couple of weeks, since I wasn’t here the last meeting. Commissioner Jones and I had the opportunity to go to Union Suites last week to be at the groundbreaking for affordable housing units that are happening through a couple of different partnerships, Dwelling Place, Orion, and others with support from the Neighborhood Association there, Noble. And so I think that was good to be able to connect there. And then the next day, we were at a housing forum that was held by Coalition for Homes For All and also Democratic Socialists of America. I think they’ve come together to create a forum that was held at the library, I know it was live streamed. We were able to talk about, I think, you know, the almost, or over $6 million that we have from HUD. I think we said like 67 million in this budget related to housing and other housing supports that we’ll spend this year and then adding additional funding to our inaugural housing fund. And I know sort of week over week and month over month, it doesn’t seem like those investments are being made, but they are. Are they enough? Are they in the urgent, in the moment? I think one of the questions that was asked is like, what can I do right now with an eviction, a pet? I can’t remember all the questions, but I appreciate the group putting on that forum. There was, I’m speaking right now. I’m speaking right now. I’m speaking right now.
All right.
I’m speaking right now. I’m speaking right now, Donnie.
Donnie, do not interrupt her. That is disrupting.
Yeah, I’m speaking right now. So if you respect women, if you respect the movement, then you’ll let people talk.
Okay.
No, 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 no. But you should respect.
You need to leave.
Bye.
You need to leave. You need to leave, you are disrupting.
No, 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 no.
Nope, you need, you need to leave.
I can talk whatever way I want because I am talking. Don’t call me Mindy, I’m Commissioner Sassi when I’m up here.
Screaming at Commissioners is disrupting the meeting.
I’m Commissioner Sassi.
Scree, you need to, you need to leave. You need to leave. Should I just adjourn?
No. I’m not saying I’m all that, but it was my time to talk.
It is, it is, Commissioner, Christians, stop interrupting and disrupting the meeting. Just stop. You, you guys.
It doesn’t even need to be like this. You could let me talk.
Let her speak. Okay. So Commissioner Sassi, I, I think you should continue your comments.
Continue your comments, the mic will pick you up.
We’re gonna continue our comments and finish this meeting. Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead, go ahead and finish and then we’re gonna adjourn. Okay.
My comments, I think my comments are really wrapped up in what I said the last, the last meeting. The reality is I’ve had a lot of motions up here. I wasn’t here at the last meeting, I did not feel well. Commissioner O’Connor had a moment, I don’t know what was going on that day, but I know I wanted to leave, I wanted to throw my book down, I wanted to tell something to somebody as I was talking. This has been non-productive in so many ways and is frustrating to know that the work that we’re doing week over week, I don’t need everybody to agree to it, but there is so much that is being done and I feel that we have the weight of a, to resolve housing and healthcare and education. And I want to say thank you to the city staff that continues to do that work for us, to continue to see this being. Bye.
Stop it.
Bye. See you later.
Stop interrupting Commissioners.
See you later. This is exactly what you want is the responses. And so, I want to say to the colleagues that have been here week over week, I’m sorry. I’m really, really sorry. To my constituents, I’m sorry because we have not been able to focus on a number of issues. To the people who came to talk about a number of issues and were interrupted, I’m sorry. To my family that texts me constantly in these meetings, to my husband who waits for me after these meetings, I’m sorry. I’m sorry that you all are having to engage in this. I want to say one last thing that I think was especially important that does need to be lifted up and that is a point of my privilege that is something I probably haven’t really thought about. The last comment from Bob about what is happening, I think our goal is always to not have an arrest, but I do think, and I’d like to understand more, what does happen after an arrest for those who identify who are trans? You know, that has been brought up to me in a number of other arenas and messages. I also did want to comment on the comment that we had in our petitions and communications around Broadway Avenue. So hopefully everybody did see that message. I know that a number of people reached out to us via email and maybe to other people individually regarding their actions and I know that we have opened an investigation against our human rights ordinance. So thank you to our colleagues who worked, who are working on that and hopefully. So thank you to our colleagues who worked, who are working on that and hopefully to find some resolution to what is happening there. I think the last, I guess the last thing I will say is, yes, this is probably what our city clerk is gonna say, but election week is next week. Voting is very important to me, no matter who's on the ballot, what's going on. I think it's an opportunity to remind everyone to turn in their ballot. It's a primary, it's often not something that, you know, people kind of think about or they forget. And I want to say thank you for everyone who is listening to us and sort of understanding that we are human individuals as well. People are asking to think about humanity, we are human beings as well. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. City Clerk?
Yeah, I will, it is election week next week and our office has been very busy preparing for that, but obviously we've had absentee ballots out there for a few weeks. So if you have your absentee ballot, please don't throw it in the mail or don't put it in the mail, use one of our drop boxes, drop it off at City Hall. Because it's not based on postmark, it's based on when we have it in our office by 8 o'clock on election night. Also, with Proposal 3 in 2018, if you're not registered yet or if you just moved to the city of Grand Rapids and you haven't changed your registration, you can register to vote in the clerk's office up until election day. So if you have your absentee ballot, there's a lot of Grand Rapidsians that still have their absentee ballots out there, so please get those in and participate in the process. And we'll continue to do our, our work too, because that's one of the, that's one of the ways we engage as, in Grand Rapids is by, is by voting. And that's, we've, we've heard lots of talk about voting and, and that, and this is, this is the time to do that. So, look forward to engaging with voters.
Thanks, City Clerk. City Attorney? City Attorney? All right, City Attorney?
I had the pleasure of taking part in the public accuracy test of the voting machines and working on the election commission. And I would just support the clerk, I would remind the community how safe and secure and reliable the voting process is. We had public attend the accuracy testing, the voting machines are working properly. And it's always an honor to be part of that process to see how our democracy does work.
Yeah, thanks. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for your work today. I want to thank all the city staff who really put in a lot of work to prepare for these meetings and I really want to let them know how much I appreciate the work. I specifically want to applaud the effort today of our police chief who has been here six months and has had to help navigate our communities through some very challenging times. And what we heard this morning was, I think, a very balanced presentation today that talked about the need to improve safety in our community and policing with reform, but also to make sure that we respect the right of all residents with the sanctity of life and focusing on de-escalation, but yet making sure that we have a city where people are safe and feel safe. I do also, I heard the work of Cure Violence lifted this evening. I want to thank the staff, the Office of Public Accountability for helping to liaison with that work. And I've heard the discussion several times today about the collective impact work of all city departments. And what you heard today was not just a result of the efforts of the police department, but there are a lot of other city employees, other departments that are trying to contribute to ensure that we have a safer community. So you'll be hearing more about that in the work in the days to come. I do want to thank our Public Works Department as well as our park staff, our water, wastewater staff, all of our emergency responders during the past weekend for the severe weather incident, fire, as well as our Department of Emergency Management who continue to not only plan but also respond during very critical moments in making sure that we partner with consumers to do our best to clear debris, trees and restore some of those essential services. So thank you, those employees who are part of that, to include our police officers who are also blocking roadways to ensure traffic safety. I do want to, for the community, follow up on some of the comments around dialogue. What we're having here is not discussion, it's, it's not even real debate. It's, it's an opportunity for this commission to hear, but not necessarily respond. So, beginning in the month of August and September and October, we will, as announced earlier, be out in the community for the Ward Night Out meetings on the second meetings of each of those months. There will be time on that day prior to the meeting for discussions to occur with various tables. I want to thank Doug Matthews for helping to facilitate that work and all the Commissioners for agreeing to be part of that. And then lastly, I want to clarify something that I heard about the contract with Experience of Grand Rapids earlier today, the $150,000. That work is intended to promote diversity among tourism for both diverse experiences, shows, acts coming into our city, but also to promote diverse contracts with local residents and businesses. And so that contract furthers our commitment to equity. And I'm very pleased that you have continued to support that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. I'll just add, I know many of you have already said things that were on my list. I'm gonna add my thanks to those who came out tonight. Also want to add my thanks to the chief for his presentation today and also really laying out the path forward. And I know a lot of work went into that and a lot of thought and analysis and a lot of dialogue with community partners and residents and businesses. So, thank you for all your work. And I know you, just as much as we are eager to get moving on actually implementation, and so we'll be working closely to do that. As the City Manager said, and I've said before, this, this is a formal business meeting and public comment is meant for us to, to hear comments. It's not a back and forth. And so these national, or not national, I'm gonna talk about that too, our commission night outs over the next few months will give us an opportunity really to come together and have smaller group conversations and hopefully more meaningful, deeper conversations. Next week, in addition to be an election day, so make sure you get out for our primary election. Also, the clerk's office will be open this Saturday from 7 to 3. So if you can't get out here on Tuesday, you can come down to the clerk's office on Saturday. But next Tuesday is also National Night Out. So I know many of us will be out in community, working and standing alongside our neighbors as we talk about what we all can do as a community to have a safer community and to prevent violence in the city. So I look forward to that. And then I just want to add on about housing. In addition to being at the recent groundbreaking, there's a lot of other work happening around housing. I'm excited to say that our first Affordable Housing Committee will meet as we look at how we can expend those funds, especially on smaller scale projects, which often are not eligible for statewide funds. And then the work of Housing Kent, which is a countywide effort to really look at housing across the spectrum. We know that we need different price points, different types of housing throughout our entire city, and there's a lot of work to be done to get there. And that effort and that work is gearing up and I'm really eager to see it move forward. And it's gonna be very data-driven. And so I'm looking forward to that work and hopefully we'll get an update and a briefing from Yurika, who's the new CEO on that work, pretty soon. And then to Mr. Palmer, who spoke about bike lanes. That's been something that I've worked on since I sat around this table. I recognize that we have a long way to go. We have made progress, even though it may not feel like we have. But we, we know, we want to be a city where both pedestrians and cyclists can be safe. And we know that there's a lot of work to be done. So thank you for caring about that issue, recognizing that it takes resources, but know that it's on our priority list. So with that, everyone, I hope you have a good night, safe travels, and we're adjourned.